Good morning. It is 9:01 and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I've established that we have a quorum present, we're missing one. So, six out of seven. First item is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the staff with no opposition received debate. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. So, we've got two items. Replat in Fort Concho and the minutes from last month's meeting. Anyone wish to pull either one of those items or make a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. All right. Regular agenda subdivision plats. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. It looks like items A and B are related. Do you want me to read them in together?
Yes, please, if you would.
Okay, so, item A, PP 22-10 preliminary plat of Lial subdivision, a request for approval of a preliminary plat of Lial subdivision being 8.601 acres located northeast of Armstrong Street and east 24th Street. And final plat, FP 22-20, Lial subdivision, section one, a request for approval of a final plat of the Lial subdivision, section one, being 1.029 acres located northeast of Armstrong Street and east 24th Street.
Good morning, Commissioner Sherry Bailey, Senior Planner, and Merry Christmas. The item before you this morning is the Lial subdivision, and thank you very much for reading both of those in. This is a, excuse me, let me move it down there. There we go. This is a piece of property that has a little bit of history, and so I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to go through that if I could. The piece of property that I have identified on here is owned by one family, the Leals. The house that you see there in our screen, the son came in to add on to his house, and while he was working through our process, his house burned, and it completely burned down, and he has had to remove all of everything except the foundation. During that process, we talked to them about plating this piece of property. It is 6.1 acres that is shown there, and then we have included this piece up here because it is a recent piece that they did purchase. So, the total is 8.61, and I will show you that plat in just a moment. The present zoning is RS1. It's east of Armstrong, Strong Street, 24th Street, and just to remind you, 24th Street has kind of not been aligned yet in the future, and so that's why we felt it was important that we follow through with the, both of a preliminary plat and final plat on this. It's in District 4, Lucy Gonzalez's district, and it's in the Paul Anne neighborhood. This is the preliminary plat. You will see that Lot 3 is that lot that was added. We have Lot 2, which is the majority of the property, and then Lot 1 is the one that is final plating today, and it is the property where the son is going to rebuild his home. We have included what was the original, almost an access easement that was provided to the lots that are south of there that are, were platted many, many years ago, and they are still on the books. So, we have required that on this preliminary plat that also shows. This does conform to the comprehensive plan and the purpose statements. There's no development that is planned in the near future on Lot 2. The family just doesn't know what they are going to do with that property, but as I indicated, Lot 1 will be the replacement home site. So, staff is recommending approval of the Leann addition, Lial addition preliminary plat with four conditions. Prior to the development of Lot 2, water and sewer mains with service connectors will be required. Prior to the development of Lot 2, a drainage study will also be required. And prior to the development of Lot 3, construction of East 24th Street meeting city standards will be required. And prior to the development of Lot 2, submit a revised plat that shows the dedication of 50-foot of right-of-way for the East 24th Street. And at this point, we don't know what that alignment is going to entail. There's also a note that the fire hydrants and fire department access will need to be And then, this is section 1, the final plat, and it is, as I indicated, just the Lot 1, which is the house lot for the son, and it will be the replacement for that original one that burned. And it does conform with the comprehensive plan and purpose statements. And staff is recommending approval of the final plat of Lial addition, section 1, subject to one condition, that prior to plat recordation, provide a copy of the Tom Green County appraisal district certification, TaxCert, indicating there are no delinquent taxes. And again, we have the note about fire hydrant and fire access which may need to be provided. And with that, my presentation is closed. If you have any questions?
I have one question. Looking at the, this preliminary plat, Lot 2, excuse me, Lot 2, it looks like it's a flag lot. Is that correct?
It is a flag lot at this point. We anticipate that a good bit of that property will be what is the East 24th Street in the future.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions? All right. Thank you, Sherry. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please state your name and address or single member district. All right. I'm going to close public comment and take anyone's thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, do we need to take motions on these separately? One motion for both? Okay.
That's what I intended.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve both and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero. All right, item C, FP 22-22 preliminary plat of, replat of Lot 2, Newman Acres. It does, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, read them together. Got it. A request for approval of a final plat of replat of Lot 2, Newman Acres, being .2634 acres located northeast of Armstrong Street and east 24th Street, and a variance from the land development and subdivision ordinance, chapter 103A1, to allow a deficient right-of-way width for East 28th Street, a minor arterial street. Item D, PP 22-12, it's actually, those are flipped. This is a final plat of replat of Lot 2, Newman Acres. A request for approval of a final plat, or a preliminary plat, it's, I guess, both, being 11, so the preliminary plat is 11.824 acres located northeast of Armstrong Street and east 24th Street, and variances from the land development and subdivision ordinance, chapter 103A1, to allow a deficient right-of-way width, and from chapter 103A2, to allow a deficient paving width for East 28th Street, a minor arterial street.
Good morning. It's Ray Lineberry, Planner, and this is both the preliminary plat and final plat for the Newman addition. And so, the preliminary plat is the whole big red area, and the final plat, well, preliminary plat includes the little blue area, but then the final plat is just the little blue area. So, the preliminary is 11.824 acres, and then the final plat is just that little blue area that is .2634 acres. It is ML zoning. It is in Lucy Gonzalez District 4 and the Paul Anne neighborhood. So, the preliminary plat, like I said, is, is kind of just breaking away Lot 2 and showing the big piece of Lot 1 left. And then the final plat is just that little Lot 2, a cell tower's going there. So, they purchased the property instead of lease it. And the preliminary plat, staff recommends approval, subject to two conditions, that they dedicate 25-foot of right-of-way. I'm going to go back one slide real quick. Two slides. Okay, so, if you notice, this is an unnamed street going, not that I'm very straight, but along there is an unnamed street that has not been constructed yet, so that way we don't land lock this black, this one back here. So, one of the conditions is to dedicate the right-of-way along that yet unnamed local street, and then also dedicate the right-of-way along 28th Street, which was down here. We also are wanting them to verify and correct if it's Newman Acres or Newman addition, and correct the year on the plat. Is it so close to December? And then the final plat, also, there's conditions, two conditions of approval that the staff recommends. The required construction of the unyet-named minor collector's street just for that little blue square that I had showed you, the .2634 acres. They also can submit a financial guarantee to extend, and to ensure the completion is within 18 months, or they can obtain a variance to try not to do it. They can, we also are requiring improvements on the 28th Street, and again, they can submit a financial guarantee to have it done within three years, or submit a variance. And we have the same notes of verify the name and the dates on that plat also. The final slide is, we are deferring some requirements because the preliminary plat is not going to be final-plated for however long, so we are deferring the installation of the sewer main along that new local road on the side there that's not created yet. We are also deferring the proposed installation of the water mains and service connections. We are also deferring the construction of the street. It's, we kind of feel that constructing that little itty-bitty of the street goes nowhere until the big preliminary plat area is constructed. And then, the paving width of 28th Street, we are deferring that because it does need some improvements and increased. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
May I have a question for you? So, on this FP 22-12 and FP 22-22, it states that it's Armstrong and East 24th, but that should be 28th, correct?
Yes, it should be 28th.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the map, please? Where is Armstrong?
Um, this way.
It's quite a ways east of Armstrong.
Correct.
The property doesn't abut Armstrong. Is that correct?
Correct, northeast of Armstrong.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Yeah. What's the width, what's the current width of 28th Street, and what is the subdivision ordinance requirement?
Current width is 25 feet.
Current is 25?
Yes.
56?
56.
56?
That's one of the reasons that we've recommended approval of the variance at this point, is just splitting this small lot out for a cell tower is really not the type of development that would typically trigger. It technically triggers it by ordinance, but there's no development, large-scale development going on that would warrant widening that road at this point.
Okay. So, if there's no development of this area in 15 years, what happens?
Well, the time, any of the rest of the surrounding properties would develop is the time at which we would recommend the requirement for the paving of that road and the widening.
Okay. But if they're providing a financial guarantee, it has a, it has a time limit on it, doesn't it?
That's one option. They can construct the road, they can provide a financial guarantee, or they can get a variance from you all, and I believe they've requested that variance.
Okay.
And we're recommending approval.
Is the, is the right-of-way part of the variance request, or just the paving width? Because I believe it was both, isn't it?
I believe it's both, yes.
Okay. So, if we've got a, if we have an arterial road that's designated, and we see that there's no development here, but there could be in the future, and that could be an arterial road, wouldn't we need the, the right-of-way to potentially expand that road down the, in the future if, if development continued over there? I mean, I can understand the paving at 25 feet, I'm just, I guess my question is the, the right-of-way. What's the right-of-way width today?
15 feet, I believe.
What is the, what should be the right-of-way if it follows the subdivision ordinances?
We're talking 28th Street or the future unnamed street?
28th Street. Or, I guess, both. The other, the other's a local road, I believe, right?
Correct.
And they have, similar to the previous plat you just looked at, this one, they are leaving the space for that. So, today, it's not critical that we even get the right-of-way or pavement on that future north-south street. But on 28th, you're correct, that we would typically get that additional right-of-way so that there's room for that future street, even if we don't get the paving expansion today.
Right. I would assume we want the right-of-way for the local road that's running north and south as well, would, would you not?
Well, again, on the preliminary plat, they've left that space for it.
Yes.
So, yes, we will get that in the future as well.
Yeah.
But they don't have to necessarily dedicate it at this point.
Okay.
But they've left it there, so it could be dedicated in the future.
Okay.
And that, that is one of the conditions, is to dedicate the right-of-way.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, the, the right-of-way for 28th Street, then? And you said it's currently 10 feet, and that it's a, an arterial that requires 56 feet?
It's, it's currently 40 feet of right-of-way.
40. Thank you.
Sorry.
And it's 56 for that arterial?
So, 60 feet is required.
Correct, 60 feet.
So, they would be responsible for half of that. The other side of the street would be responsible for their half, so that would mean an additional 10 feet of right-of-way they would have to show.
Okay.
On the.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, let's open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single member district. All right, we're going to close public comment, and does anyone have questions or wish to make a motion? I'm still unclear. It, uh, the, the item on the agenda shows to allow a deficient right-of-way width and deficient paving width, so...
That's the request, but if your intent is to have them go ahead and dedicate that, the right-of-way on 28th, you would, would recommend approval of the plat.
Personally, I think, yeah, I don't, the paving is, I understand the paving meets the minimum requirements at 25 feet, but I don't see any need to, to not take the right-of-way that we need for the road that's been designated. That's, that's my opinion. Anyone want to make a motion?
Is there any, we can go back to the, it's page 17, I guess, in the report, but it's page four of this presentation. I guess page four and five.
So, the plats?
Yes.
Yep.
Can you show, I guess, can you show me on there where the right-of-way would be on 28th? Is that? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure I understand where it should be.
Here's 28th.
Yeah.
So, it would be 10 feet off the front of that.
So, it would go into where the utility easement is?
Correct.
It'd be the same line, basically.
Correct.
Basically, it looks like that 10-foot utility easement is actually offset from the property line slightly, but yes, it would be within that. It would basically be turning that 10-foot utility easement into right-of-way. And so, it's, it's area because of the utility easement, they can't develop anyway.
So, what's the, what's the benefit to the developer not to get the right, or not to give the right-of-way now? Is there a reason why we wouldn't?
Doesn't appear that they're here to answer that, Luke. But I would, I would wonder the same. I guess they're giving land that they can't develop.
They're giving up land, but again, it's a part of the utility easement, so it's not really developable anyway, so it, I wouldn't think that would be much of a hardship.
Ray, can you go back to the summary?
Preliminary or final?
Yes. Okay, that's for the preliminary. There's five conditions, is it? Okay.
Well, those two conditions, and then there are others that were deferred.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve this as presented with the deferment listed.
Does that include getting the right-of-way as, as was just recently discussed, or the variance to that?
The variance. I think that's on there, in the, is that listed in the deferment, isn't it?
It is. It's listed in the deferment.
The way it was presented.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to, to approve and grant variances for the right-of-way width and the paving width. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. You have hands for the opposed? Is it just Luke and, we have three? So, four to three, it's approved. PP 22-11, Shriner's Point Revised Preliminary Plat, request for approval of Shriner's Point Revised Preliminary Plat being 27.237 acres located southwest of Armstrong Street and east 40th Street.
This will bring back memories to those of you that have been on the commission for a while, but this property is located, located again off of Armstrong, but to the west of Armstrong, and it's up near 40th, between 40th, 39th, and 38th. It was rezoned in 2019 to RM2, and so, it, the intent at that time was to build multifamily home, apartment complex up there, and there were a lot of concern by the surrounding property owners. There is a new property owner at this time, and he is proposing to go back to the original plan, which was single-family homes. So, the preliminary plat before you today is the 27.237 acres. It's presently zoned RM2, but will be coming back to you in January for rezoning to RS1. It encompasses, as I said, 40th, 39th, and Bloom Street. It is in District 2, Mr. Thompson's district, and it is in the Lakeview neighborhood. This is the proposed preliminary plat, and the one item that I do want to point out to you is that, whoops, that was maybe too much. Right here, Bloom Street will actually be headed directly onto 40th. It will not come in at that five-foot intersect, or five-street intersection that past development has wanted to do, so Bloom will be offset about 125 feet on that, their intersection. But other than that, this plat does include the two drainage areas that were part of their original discussion because this entire area drains through this piece of property. And as I indicated, both the rezoning and the final plat, the first final plat will be coming next month. You want to get me up there? Okay. We'll try it again. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with four conditions. Prior to the final signature, correct the right-of-way widths on the adjoining streets. They have the right-of-way for both 40th and 39th incorrect. Prior to the final plat, correct proposed lot widths or request of variance. Prior to the final signature, submit a revised preliminary plat in illustrating contours sufficient to show topography, we do require that. And prior to final signature, provide the correct street names. And we have two notes on this. Paved roads, water mains, and fire hydrants are required for residential development, and future final plating will have additional infrastructure with requirements. With that, are there any questions?
You have on note 2, correct the proposed lot widths or request of variance?
On the final plat.
Right.
The final plat that comes before you next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are the lot widths on this preliminary plat not correct?
Some of the lot widths on the corners are not correct.
Okay.
So, they'll either ask for a variance, which they will do, or correct it.
Okay. All right. Anyone have questions for the staff? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Again, if you wish to speak, please state your name and address or single member district.
Good morning. Erica Wilde with Carter Fintress Engineering. I wanted to make a note that we have already submitted for the request of the lot widths through the ZBA, and we'll have that meeting when? January 9th, so. And with that, I just ask that y'all... And with that, I just ask that y'all approve as presented.
What was the request, for a variance?
Yes, it'll go through the ZBA. We're asking for a variance because those streets have double frontage. And so typically, you would have 25 foot off of double frontage on the corners. So we're asking for 25 foot off of one and then less on the other.
Side? Okay.
Typical request, so.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Erica?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion or comments. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Related rezoning and subdivisions. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of subdivisions. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Z 22-23, 3061 Travis Street. A request for approval of a rezoning from the single-family residential zoning district to the two-family residential zoning district being 2.129 acres located at the northwest corner of Travis Street and East 30th Street.
This may also look familiar to you. This came before you a year ago as a final plat. So the applicant has taken a look at it. I believe there is a different partner in play, at play now. And so the request is to go from RS1 to RS2 for the same area of 11 lots. And it will become duplexes. And they are bringing that plat forward today. It is adjacent to the Head Start. It is in District 2, Tom Thompson's district, and it is the Lakeview neighborhood. This is a picture so that you can see that 30th Street itself is curb and guttered and paved. That was just a reminder because last time you were asked, weren't asked for a variance. This time, they have requested a variance, and I'll go over that in just a moment. We sent out 16 notifications. We had two from property owners that were opposed. Neither of which gave any reason for that, other than they just sent back the notice that they were opposed. The rationale on this rezoning is that it... This neighborhood includes single... Our neighborhood includes single-family and two-family areas, so they are not asking for a deviation from the future land use. It is consistent with our zoning ordinance. RS1 and R2 are both, again, viewed as a small change in single-family areas. The properties in this area are all small-scale residential, and this will be in keeping with that. We don't see that there are any changes to conditions or the natural environment that's already existing. The community need, in this case, affordable, single-family rental property is always needed, and duplexes usually fill that. And this is an infill project with set development patterns, and this will continue those patterns. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from a single-family residential zone to a two-family residential zone on the property listed as 3061 Travis Street, day addition, Section 1 lots 1 through 11. Are there any questions?
Have questions for the staff? So this tract that's being rezoned is 2.129 acres?
Yes, sir.
Is there a plat associated with...
Yes, sir, it's following. It's the day addition.
Can I... Can we read that in and discuss it?
Yes, certainly.
So FP 22-19, day addition, a request for approval of a final plat of day addition. Section 1 being 2.129 acres located at the northwest corner of Travis Street, East 30th Street. And variances from land development subdivision ordinance, chapters 103A1 to allow a deficient right-of-way width and from chapter 103A2 to allow a deficient paving width for East 30th Street, a local street.
The plat before you is the same 50-foot wide plat that you saw before, except what you saw before had 11th... Lot 11th that extended all the way across here. And what the applicant has done is made these two lots a little larger and then made Lot 11 smaller. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat of Section 1 lots 1 through 11, subject to the following conditions. Tax certification for Tom Green County. Prior to plat recordation, a drainage study shall be submitted. Prior to plat recordation, submit plans for service connections. Prior to plat recordation, submit plans for East Street. Incremental half minimum paving width or obtain a variance from the Planning Commission. And approval of the final plat condition on City Council approval of rezoning case. And that's very important because it can't take effect until then. Size lot and layout and approval of the variance for street widths on 30th Street. Again, we have the note for fire hydrants and access for the fire department. And prior to plat recordation, we're going to have them correct the width on... just on the plat itself for Lot 9. The front says 50 feet, the back says 57. So we'll have them correct that. Are there any questions?
I just want to make sure. I'm looking at the pictures, make sure I understand the variance request. There's curb and gutter already in place.
Yes.
Asking to maintain what's already there.
Yes, they're asking to maintain what's already there. We're having to bring the lot width, right-of-way width, to you on 30th. Because of the new ordinance, street width ordinance, if it doesn't meet 40 feet, they have to ask for a variance on those that are existing, and it's less than that.
Could you go back to the plat, please? What are the typical dimensions of those duplex lots?
I thought you were gonna ask. I believe it's 50 by 175.
In the zoning ordinance minimums?
On the plat, yeah.
Yeah.
They're 50 by 175?
Yes, and that is sufficient, yes.
Three, six, 11 of them?
Yes, sir.
That length will be almost double what the zoning ordinance minimum is.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else?
The three on the corner are the same length and width?
The three on the corner are a little larger in width. They're less in length, but they're a little larger in width. So they'll be able to accommodate the parking that is required for duplexes.
And then the current zoning for this is single-family, RS1?
It is RS1, and they're asking for RS2.
Can you explain the staff's support for the change of zoning?
Certainly, let me go.
Maybe in the other case.
Yeah, I evidently just pressed the wrong button. There we go. We have in the area, if you will, RS2, just a block up. RS3 on the other side of that.
Are those... How many units are on those lots?
This is a... I think there are at least two triplexes that were originally intended for up there. This is a duplex over here.
Okay.
And then we have manufactured housing that is a block away.
Where's that?
Down here.
Just to the south, okay.
And then two blocks to the west, we have commercial.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff? I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single member district.
Again, Erica Wilde with Carter Fintress Engineering. So the client, or the applicant, sorry, my client, your applicant. He's done a few of these around town. They are top-notch. I can get you all the addresses if you would like to drive by and see the work that they do. But, and to whoever, whoever wants to drive by and see them. So with that, I ask that you approve as presented.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment.
I would recommend taking separate votes since the... It's not a preliminary plat and a final plat, it's a zoning case and a plat. So I would recommend taking them up separately as you vote.
Okay. The only thing that concerns me about this case is the... It's not necessarily the duplex zoning, it's the number of duplexes that are going on this lot. It's a lot of units to put in this, in this one area. But it doesn't appear that we have a lot of opposition from folks that have spoken, so.
What's the minimum lot width for duplexes? 50 by 100? But the minimum area is 6,500, so either the length needs to be a bit longer or the width needs to be a bit longer.
Okay.
I think this is a great thing for our city because we do need more housing, and duplexes are what we're missing out on. And I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, so...
The...
You want to rezone first?
Rezoning, yes.
Let's rezone it first. So we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning to RS2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's 6-0 on rezoning? Yeah, Joe recused himself.
So on the 2219, I would also make a motion to approve that as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the final plat as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. 5-1. Approved. All right. Need to... Could someone go get Joe for us, please? We're on related comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings. The City Council has final authority for approval of comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings. We have, it looks like, one item. 3707 North Chadburn Street, CP 2206, 3707 North Chadburn Street. A request for approval of an amendment to the comprehensive plan, changing certain lands from neighborhood to the commercial future land use, being .58 acres located northwest of Chadburn Street and West 37th Street. And Z 22-24, 3707 North Chadburn Street. A request for approval of a zoning from the single-family residential to general commercial zoning district being .58 acres located northwest of Chadburn Street and West 37th Street.
The property in question is this L-shaped lot that's on North Chadburn. That area has split this piece of property almost equally between CGCH, our head... general commercial, heavy commercial, and residential. But the back end of that lot is landlocked. You cannot get to it except through going through the commercial area. The applicant would like to change the comprehensive plan on that back portion and change it to commercial. It is .58 acres. It is 3707 North Chadburn, as you indicated. District 2, Mr. Thompson's district, in the Riverside neighborhood. So this shows the future land use, which is neighborhood on the back end, commercial on the front. And then it also shows corresponding RS1 on the back. And the applicant in this case is asking for CG, and we'll go through that in a minute. We mailed out 21 notices. There were two in support, and I did not receive any in opposition. In fact, the property owner that is immediately adjacent to this center area, and I misplaced the star on that, called me, visited with me quite a while about it, and said she was definitely in support. Her only concern was that it be fenced in, and the applicant already knows that the CG he's proposing will require a fencing on that. Our rationale in this, it's looking at the... First, the comprehensive plan. There was a similar change, and I need to go back to that that should have occurred for this area up in here when the applicant up there wanted to change it. He went with neighborhood commercial because what he was proposing to do at that time was to meet the needs of the little local area, residential area around there. And he was up against rural and estate. And in this case, the applicant is looking to have a broader, a little broader, commercial venue. But he is also adjacent to RS1. We believe this is consistent with the zoning ordinance in this particular case, that CG will provide a buffer area. The outdoor storage is really not allowed. The applicant is intending to build a storage building for his business that will be on the front end, which is GNG Garage Doors. He just repairs and design and installs garage doors. So he wanted an area that was safe, that he could keep his storage in that back building so that he won't be working in that building. He will be working in the front building in the CGCH area. So we believe that this is compatible with the area. We believe changed conditions, it was intended up there that commercial development would occur as the area started to infill. We've had a number of changes in the past, and we do not feel that this is inconsistent with those. We don't believe that there will be much of an impact on the local area. He's intending only to put in the one storage building. It's not a lot... It's not going to have outdoor storage or anything that would impact the area. Community need staff believes that this small area in this is a one-owner type of request. He meets a very specific need and intends on following through on that. And we believe development patterns are occurring up there in the area as they were intended to do. And so therefore, we are recommending this. So staff is recommending an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan on changing the area from neighborhood to commercial. And then recommending approval to zone the .58 acres, that is the back landlocked piece of property. that is the back landlocked piece of property from single-family zoning to general commercial. And because in our mind, no one is going to build a single-family home there, and they couldn't get to it if they wanted to. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions for the staff?
We do have an addition on the front of the applicant, staff report. The applicant is the owner of the property, Mr. Garza, and he is here in the audience and would be available for questions or would like to talk with you.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Nope. I am on, well, CP twenty-two oh six. It's thirty-seven oh seven North Chadburn Street. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Is the rezoning just for the point five-eight acres?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the frontage on Chadburn Street, what's the zoning for that?
It's CGCH.
Thank you.
Do we need two votes on this since it's rezoned?
These can be combined.
These can be together, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the change to the comprehensive plan and the rezoning from single-family to general commercial. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven-zero. Right-of-way abandonment. City council has final authority for approval of right-of-way abandonments. Item A, street wide of, right-of-way abandonment, portion of Cox Lane. Request to abandon approximately four thousand sixty feet of right-of-way of Cox Lane being near eighteen-sixty-one Cox Lane and extending two thousand three hundred thirty feet to the west, and then one thousand seven hundred thirty feet to the south, ending approximately three hundred and twenty feet north of the intersection of Sunset Drive and Foster Road.
As you indicated, this is a request for approval to abandon a portion of Cox Lane. I won't go through the square, the footage, you have already done that. But it's next to an area that the applicant is hoping to develop. It's about thirty acres. It is presently outside of the city limits, so eventually one of the requirements will be that it annex into the city, and it would be reasonable to assume then that it would be in District one, Mr. Hebert's district, in the Nazareth neighborhood. We sent out thirty-one notices. We received zero in favor. We had five in opposition, but we had a number of calls. And as I went to put the stars on there, I realized that they were the ones in the trails subdivision, more or less, but it was really hard to put them on there. And I wanted to list, the items that came up most often were there's not enough information. They want to know how it's going to affect how they use Cox Lane and how soon it would be abandoned and what that meant. How does it benefit the city was a question that we had quite often. And how would the change be handled? And we did talk with anyone who called about that, and what is going to be built there. The applicant proposes, proposes to vacate Cox along both the northeast-west and the north-south running of Cox. They want to provide a, what I call a realignment, or that would be down to this point, which would come across then and eventually hook up into Parkview Street. They would extend the trail subdivision streets down, and those streets would, would hook into their, their development. The rationale for it, the staff looked at this, and I understand it's been talked about while I was gone, for a year, year and a half, if you will. Staff does not believe in looking at this and talking to some of the other departments that the traffic patterns would be negatively affected. The removal of Cox Lane and then the hooking it into Foster Road would be an improvement on that area. As you're well aware, there's a differentiation between the elevation of those two streets. It's always, at busy times, a problem area, so we think that would help clean up a problem area. We, there were questions about utilities out there. Utility companies, we're notifying them, they're, they're involved with any discussions that we have, so they would be part of this discussion. Staff sees no negative community impact at this point, and we believe that the correcting an existing problem would outweigh the, any minor problems that occur right now. So staff is recommending the following conditions if the planning commission recommends moving forward with this abandonment to the city council. We recommend that you, the applicant submit, attain approval of, and officially record a subdivision replat absorbing all of the abandoned rights-of-way into the adjacent lots, meaning all requirements of the land development and subdivision ordinance. Item two is after approval of the associated plat and payment, verify the recordation and quitclaim deeds, effectively completing the city's claim to the entirety of that abandoned street. The, number three, the abandonment of Cox Lane shall not be in effect until connecting streets have been built to ensure access to all of the properties on the north side of the existing Cox Lane and ensure continued connectivity to Foster Street. So that would be a tricky thing because they would be developing it before Cox Lane could be abandoned. And so there would be some give and take along that, but we felt it was important to continue that connectivity of the city's street until it was ready to be abandoned. And then item four, ensuring continued access to, for the property at the existing Cox Lane, east-west portion, that one at the west corner. The owner of that property came in and said that is his only access, and we understand that it is. And so we would expect the applicant for the abandonment to work with the city and work with that owner so that they had access to a street to get out and away from their property. And with that, the applicant is here, their representative is here, and wants to talk with you about their proposal, so.
Could you, could you go back to the aerial map? Do you have an aerial view of this anywhere? Perfect. Okay, so we have east-west Cox and north-south Foster.
At what, north-south Cox.
Or south Cox?
Yes.
Okay, so east-west Cox has a neighborhood on the north end of it.
Yes.
And you're, you're proposing that the, this green stretch of road running east and west is completely abandoned?
That's what they're asking for, yes.
And jogged to the south?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what about the north-south stretch of Cox?
They're asking that that be abandoned also.
So there'd be no road running north-south?
There would be Foster.
Okay, on the south end only?
It would be all along here.
All along there, okay.
Yeah, we've got those two streets that are side by side.
Yeah, okay.
And so their streets, as they developed them, would come across that area.
But we'd still have a north-south road?
Cox would then come down like this and come across to Parkview.
Right, but there would remain a road running north and south on the eastern boundary, or excuse me, western boundary of the vacant land.
Until this new Cox and their connecting roads are built, and then this would all be abandoned up here.
Foster goes.
Foster exists today and would continue to remain.
Thank you, okay.
Would there be elevation changes on Foster, or how will you deal with that?
I think the applicant is probably better able to answer that.
All I got. Thank you, Sherri. I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Planning Commission, Hillary Bueker. I'm with Dorado Construction Group. So we are Cox Property Development, we're working together. This is just part of the development that we're doing. Foster is already there, Travis, to answer your question. It does run north-south. I believe it's thirty-six foot wide at this point, so possibly either leaving it the existing thirty-six foot or expanding it to meet the major collector status. But the process, and Sherri, it's been a while, I had to run the clicker. I wanna go to the one where it's the Y image, that one.
Yes.
So currently proposed, we again would pull the streets down from the trails. We believed it would be a buffer for these residents, allowing this, I think a lot more traffic will use this once it's straightened out. So this would allow a kind of a buffer. The lots we're proposing north of this new collector would be the same size as the trail, so they'd be sixty by about one-twenty, so approximately the same kind of character and design as they existing have in that development. South of there, we're looking at a little bit more density, but these would be similar. Right now, they're similar to the lots that are behind Sam's, if you can kind of visualize the Tony Jones homes on that development. Most of the times when you have homes fronting a collector, those are not gonna be your super-nice, big lots. Those are gonna be a higher density. So currently, our plan is to take Cox, kinda S-curve it down and tie it into Parkview. This would eliminate a double collector system that the city had existing there. Cox and Parkview were planned for collectors very close together. So this would eliminate the duplication. And Trinidad was right, there is some elevation difference on this far north part of Foster. So this also eliminates the need of having to cut into that a lot to make the connection. So there was some, some grading drainage issues as well. We appreciate and understand all the conditions. They make sense. We are planning to come forward with a final plat. If we do not, then this would not need to be abandoned, so all of these make complete sense to us. We would record the quitclaim deed. We'd make sure that as construction was going, everyone has access, just like they do today. It might change a little bit, but that is very important to keep this area moving with traffic. And finally, we understand there is one property, and it's approximately right there, that we'll have access problems when we do this. We will, we'd love to talk to the property owners and come up with a plan. There's multiple options here. We could connect back into the trails. We could go maybe to Foster, depending on elevation changes. So we understand this condition, and we will move forward as needed.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Hillary?
Hillary, coming down Foster, when you first turn in, how would they access this road? Is that gonna be a, I mean, right now, it's a very narrow, make a, it depends on the direction, a right-hand turn.
Yes, sir. So I think through talking with the city, the north-south part of Cox has needed to be abandoned for a while. Like you said, it's a very narrow strip, some kind of dangerous turns. So this new collector that we're proposing would just tee in at Foster. So Parkview would go to your left, and you would also have the right. So it would be more of a normal intersection, kind of a ninety-degree intersection. So you would drive all the way up Foster. You wouldn't be able to turn on as, as soon as you do now. You would have to drive up Foster and then turn on to Parkview to the right.
Anyone else have questions?
Thank you. I believe Mr. Lennon is referring to the piece that we were talking about having access issues. That's one of our conditions of approval, and we understand that, and we'll address that as we go forward. So that's a very important piece that y'all recommend as a condition of approval because without that, this land could potentially be landlocked. So it's very important that we address that as we're going forward in this process.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up. We're in open public comment.
My name's Justin Mitchell, and I live adjacent to Cox Lane currently. What are we gonna do with the road once it closes?
Can you state your name, I'm sorry?
Justin Mitchell, I live at four-three-three-four Chisholm Trail.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's going to happen to the existing Cox Lane?
Once the right-of-way is abandoned, if it is, if they approve it and if city council approves it, we will then have to go through a process of every portion of, or every property that's adjacent to a portion of this will have first right of refusal to their half. So the right-of-way would be split in half, and every property that's adjacent will have a choice whether to buy their half adjacent to their property, or the developer would be able to then, if they don't want it, we could then take it in and make it part of our lot. So it's part of the process, but it would go away once. It was, if it was abandoned, the right-of-way would go away, and so it'd become private property.
Okay, so you're proposing to butt up another neighborhood against our houses? If we don't buy that land?
Yes, sir. Currently, the right-of-way is in blue here, so if, if the land is not purchased, there would be another home lot directly adjacent, that's correct.
Okay, so you'd be stripping away my corner lot, essentially? Okay, all right. So I'm in, no.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's a, that's a good point. All of these lots here that are currently corner lots would ultimately have, they would no longer be corner lots. They would just be, that row of homes.
They would be folded into the subdivision, I understand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dorothy Helscher. I live at two-eighteen County Road, four-oh-five in Ballenger. I own the house at sixteen-oh-six Parkview in this plat. I have some real concerns about losing the integrity of our little Capitol Heights neighborhood, and how when this if, I hope not, this proposed Cox Lane would blend into Parkview and would become maybe a shortcut to get to Sunset Lane down YMCA Drive or to the new senior care facility that I understand is in the planning stages at the end of YMCA Drive. The density of the housing, just the number of houses that are planned, will greatly increase traffic. The lot that is landlocked, I don't own, and I don't know who owns it. But I do know that is a drainage area, and so the lady who just spoke talked about working with that lot owner. Maybe all of those things need to be discussed before anything is approved because drainage is a huge issue in Capitol Heights. I've seen water over the curb in the houses at Parkview. Ten houses from Foster Lane. I've seen water over the curb at the end of Kansas. As the water flows down Foster into the Red Arroyo, it backs up. Sometimes the Red Arroyo itself is backed up. There's all kinds of debris here that drains into the Red Arroyo. Those kinds of issues maybe need to be tackled before anything is approved here. More planning needs to be done. Elimination of the gradient difference between the existing Cox Lane and Foster will also create its own issues. I don't know, I don't know enough about drainage. I don't know enough about planning, but I can see there's many feet of elevation difference between those two roads. If there were solutions to Cox Lane, as it exists now, that would ease this problem of some traffic congestion, maybe speed bumps. Maybe, maybe this ninety-degree turn right here is a problem, but maybe lighting would be an inexpensive solution until all of these issues are thought out more by the development company. As far as the community impact, I think any existing house, just as the man, Mr. Mitchell, said, his, his lot will be changed. If he doesn't have the. his, his lot will be changed. If he doesn't have the money to buy the existing, the abandoned Cox Lane, somebody else is going to get it. And who knows how much that will sell for? It's just too many unanswered questions at this point. I would recommend that this group of people consider that more planning needs to be done. More consensus needs to be reached. We need to understand better how having more houses will benefit the people that are already there. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Jerry and Mary Wilson, sixteen forty-one Parkview Drive. Appreciate one. We've lived in, on Parkview for thirty-six years. Park, Capitol Heights is a very quiet, I guess you'd call, neighborhood, since there are no through streets except for Sunset. Means we don't have traffic. And every, every day, you see many, many walkers, people walking dogs, people walking kids in the neighborhood, and go right down Parkview. If this is, if Parkview becomes a through street, which I know the original plan was that some forty, fifty years ago, it will affect the whole neighborhood, the whole Capitol Heights neighborhood. And it will change from being a, just a residential neighborhood. Currently, the only commercial is on Sunset Street.
Yes, sir.
And we would prefer to see no-through Parkview. And when you consider that Cox Lane and Foster Road have somewhere, sometimes places up to four to five feet difference in height on the, on the streets, I'm not sure how that's going to be handled. But we would, we don't have a problem with them building the houses in that development as long as we keep the streets sort of like they are, and do not make Parkview a through street.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I just would like to ask the council to please consider that sometimes change is not always for the better. And we have enjoyed living on Parkview Street because it is quiet and, and the traffic is minimal. And we would like to keep it that way. So thank you for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you both.
Hi. My name's Brandy Beal. I live at sixteen-oh-five Parkview Street. I have lived in this home for seventeen years. I moved to this home as knowing that it would be a safe neighborhood to raise my daughter and the proximity to the hospital. The only downside to my neighborhood is currently this intersection. And this intersection, the, the staff that feels that this would not affect traffic does not use this intersection very often. This intersection is very challenging. And every week, I see narrowly avoided fender benders at this intersection. This traffic has increased greatly since the Walmart was developed, as people use this as a shortcut from Knickerbocker over to the other side of town. If you watch the traffic flow down Cox, you will see a vehicle pass down the road every few seconds. When I first opened this letter, I thought, wow, the intersection's going to be repaired. There's going to be some change to that Cox, Sunset, Foster. And then, to my horror, I realized that they're moving all that traffic to my intersection. The house that was safe to raise my daughter will not be safe to have my grandchild play at that street. I, I feel that there one needs to be a, a traffic signal, because this is a very high-traffic area. And not only is it a high-traffic area, but you can also see, there's no buildings to obstruct the view. All it is is impatient cars. And also, the challenge with that sharp turn, as people, they're trying to turn into the Foster from there, they misjudge their turning radius, and that's one of the causes. It would be much better to build this road this way. That would be the safer route of traffic. That would reroute all the traffic from the, the hospital, the nursing facility safely, and allow for the buildup of more homes. I would love to see more homes in the area. I just do not want that high traffic to be on my intersection. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dorothy Helscher again. I own the house at sixteen-oh-six Parkview. When I was speaking with Sherri about this land, she told me that there's probably toxic waste buried here, and that would have to be remediated before development could occur. As I stated before, as I'm begging you before, please just wait. Let more work be done, more planning, more gathering of information before any of this moves forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Hi. I'm Michelle McKinnis. I live at seventeen-twenty-one Kansas Avenue. Not in this location. I actually only came to this meeting to listen and observe. But I feel, I, I live in seventeen, on Kansas Avenue, which is directly right off of Cox Lane. So we are a part of the traffic every day. I would like to point out that no one has brought up the elementary school that is right here, right off of Foster Lane, and there is increased traffic there, especially during the school zone times. I don't believe that this proposed plan has taken into account that traffic on top of all the other citizens' concerns. I do feel like you should have a traffic count before you implement this plan. And I do, I do not remember her name, but I do feel like more planning needs to be done before this should be approved. And I also, I'm only, I'm very new to the area, and I am all for building up San Angelo. That's actually why I'm here. I would love to see more houses in that area, especially on Cox Lane. That road is decrepit, but I don't believe that this is the answer. I just thought that you should take into account that elementary school when you're considering the, the closure of that road. And I do feel like the secondary swoop down here would be a better solution to not only take out that ninety-degree turn, but then help for that school traffic flow, because that is right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else wish to speak on this? Alright, I'm gonna close public comment.
Well, no, just based on any of the comments.
There was, there's no waste that we know of. We have considered drainage. If you look in the bottom right of the screen, there is the detention pond. We're already planning for the drainage aspects of this new development. We've been working on the traffic patterns and studies with the city engineer for, like they said, probably a year, year and a half, trying to figure out the best way to move safely through this area. I do understand the concerns of this, this traffic will have access now to Foster more north than it was before. But Foster is a very large, major collector road, and should be able to handle that traffic. As well, Parkview again is existing minor collector, as well as Cox.
You, uh, do you own at the intersection of Sunset and Foster?
No, sir, we do not.
That's south of your boundary?
Yes, sir. So this property right here is the church. I assume that's what she's talking about with the school. I'm assuming they have a school there. That is the church, though, that I believe part of it burnt down or fell down and then was rebuilt. So that is that property. So we do not go, there is another property that is south of us that hits the intersection.
Okay.
One of the primary concerns that keeps coming up is the traffic there on Parkview?
Yes, sir.
Is there any consideration as to, you know, either speed bumps or other alternatives to move the traffic down away from Parkview and maybe just to the collector road?
Not on our side. Again, we are trying to more, I guess, to keep it safer and to allow this traffic to not have those ninety-degree turns. I would not be able to speak. We'd need someone from engineering or public works to talk about the existing Parkview. I'm not able to speak on that. But I don't know, I haven't seen Kevin maybe here.
Is the proposed, is the proposed Parkview an arterial? What's the width of that proposed road?
No, sir. Parkview existing and Cox existing are minor collectors.
What's the width of that road?
The width of the road, I believe, would be fifty, y'all planners, help me if I'm wrong. But the paved width in the ordinance would be fifty for a collector. Everybody, I'm looking at everybody. I'm sorry. I don't have the ordinance. I used to have my book in front of me at all times. Or right-of-way or pavement?
So the pavement width would be forty-eight.
Okay, I'm sorry, forty-eight.
Compared to forty for a standard street. And as one of the speakers mentioned, when that neighborhood was planned, that was built and planned as a collector street.
So does existing Parkview, is it forty-eight feet wide?
Existing Parkview is probably closer to sixty-four. I mean, it's huge. And they could probably speak to that better. I, I haven't measured it, but the existing, the residents might know better than I would. It's a very large pavement.
It may or may not meet those current standards. It was built as a collector at the time, so whatever standards were in place at that time.
Right. I understand that, John. What I'm concerned about is adding a lot of cars to a narrow road. If we're, if we're relocating and diverting traffic, changing a traffic pattern significantly. My, my fundamental question is, can the road, is the road that's there sufficient to meet the increase in traffic? According to the current subdivision ordinance?
We, we would have to look at that. I, I don't know if we can try to find that answer out right here. I will say, I, I don't know that the width of the road and the construction of the road is, is the primary concern. I think it's probably sufficient. The bigger concern is a, basically a street that has become a, a local, effectively a local street with homes facing directly on it. This would add additional traffic.
Well, possible, because again, most of the Cox Lane traffic existing today has run east-west and then directly north-south to get to Sunset. They still have that option on Foster Road. So they could still turn south on Foster, which is a, I would say, a much easier road to travel on than Parkview. Again, driving down a road with homes that face it as a motor, as a motorist, you're aware, hopefully, most people are aware of the homes that are surrounding it. Whereas Foster, those are side yards. So I would imagine the traffic and the speed on Foster is probably higher than the speed in the, the traffic on Parkview.
And is it, before we move on, I, I did, was able to get the answer there. It, it is forty-eight-foot paving width, so it's wider than, so it does meet our current standard for collector.
Hillary, the east-west line up at the top that's existing Foster, I guess, before it kind of hooks down into Cox,
The blue, right here is Cox existing today.
Is there a reason, is it the elevation drop-off when it hits Foster of why you're just not connecting straight in there?
Yeah, so there was multiple things we looked at in planning the subdivision. There is an elevation change right here, and several of the citizens spoke to that. So that was one of the things that kind of deterred us from connecting in there. As well, if you look at the master thoroughfare plan, which I wish we had a map up here, existing, you have a minor collector planned here. You have a minor collector here. You have a minor collector here, and then you have a major collector here. So this, from a development standpoint, seemed a little redundant. So we were trying to reduce the redundancy. There's multiple ways to look at it, but in, in my head, the, the option was, if we don't abandon this, we will still connect Parkview probably to this collector. We will probably have to do Cox, just judging by today's standards. So allowing this, or this abandonment will not prevent Parkview from connecting through, if that makes sense. Parkview is still planned in the master thoroughfare plan to connect to what I believe will be Adobe coming down. Well, I understand, I really do understand their concerns, but it is in the, in the plans. It has been for a very long time. We were just trying to reduce the redundancy of this and the redundancy of the Cox and Foster north-south.
Looks like as far as driving, it would be,
If you'd like to speak, please come up. Public comment's still open.
A lot of the comments have been about Capitol Heights, how it, Cox and Foster Road are there. But one thing you have to consider is the east end of Cox Lane. If y'all have driven Cox Lane, been on Ben Pickland Road, that Cox Lane ends right behind that town and country, the Stripes, pardon, Stripes.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly where it ends.
Yes, sir.
And how is, how are y'all going to handle traffic in that area?
Right. Thank you.
To address that comment, as this board knows, we get roads and right-of-ways through subdivision development. So as the properties at the BNR subdivision on Cox have developed, they've had to dedicate their right-of-way and improve Cox Lane. So as you drive it today, on the south side, you see the improvements that are made. The north part has not developed, and I don't know when or if it will with that easement that goes through it for the overhead power. But as those come in, these roads will be further developed. And that's how we get this. That's how we get where we are today.
Thank you, Hillary.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Brandy Beal, sixteen-oh-five Parkview again. The elementary school discussed is Trinity Lutheran. And it takes daycare up to junior high, I believe. A child can go there until high school. And this here is a, a school zone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm gonna close public comment. Seems like a lot to unpack here in, in one meeting. I think that this, this realignment of the road has a pretty significant impact on a lot of folks in this area. And I don't know that I'm comfortable moving forward with a, a direction this morning, based on what's been presented. There's a lot of variables in play here. Those are just my thoughts. Anyone else want to share their thoughts?
You know, given the fact that Parkview in the future is going to, you know, be opened and will be used for traffic, as you go down Cox Lane, and especially that corner that we're talking about with the high elevation, it is a very dangerous corner. Going down that road myself, I see constant replacement of the barriers, which normally means there's been something not, that's not good. So from, from my perspective, you know, from where they're starting and where they're ending, I do like this, this movement to get away from that very dangerous curve and dangerous everything else. I, I do respect, you know, what the folks are saying about, you know, the, the proposed changes. And I would hope that, you know, the, the planning as we go forward would find some way to mitigate as much as they can the traffic on Parkview. Maybe drive it on Foster Road. But I personally think that this is a, a good move to get away from a very dangerous situation.
And I agree with you on that. The other thing that we need to discuss just a little bit is the abandonment. So each person owns half of the, if it's abandoned, the homeowners that abut that street own half of that, or they can own half of that. That is done through the city council. So they are the ones, they have That is done through the city council. So they are the ones, they have a department that will come up with the cost and what it is. It has nothing to do with the person that's developing the land. That is city property. And so they would be the ones, for the homeowners, that decide that they do want to buy that extra piece if this were to pass. So just to know that it's not just a, um, a number that's thrown out there. The city is the one that takes care of that. They come up with the, the prices and offer that to the abutting, um, property owner. Just to clarify that a little bit.
How many feet are between Cox Lane and Parkview? Anyone answer that? The distance between Cox Lane and Parkview, that, where it's, I, I'm sorry, on the, on this stretch that's running east and west? Where the, where the roads were removing that road?
I just want to clarify, you're talking from this point to this point?
Correct.
Okay. So each of these locks is approximately sixty feet. I don't have a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So four hundred and fifty feet? I mean, I'm guessing, um...
So could Cox be turned into just a, a local road and remain?
East-west?
Yes.
Possibly.
As an, as an alternative, so that the folks that have lost their access with what's proposed from abandoning that stretch, and now we've...
Wouldn't it run into an alley or what used to be an alley?
It would, it would. It would run into, there, it does not directly abut in a, a street. It directly, if you were tying it straight in, it would come to this alley versus the street. And the, like I said, the elevation change is significant there, like the residents have spoke about. So that would, that would be a deterrent for...
That's... Yeah.
I got on Google and looked at that, because that's what I thought. It was from straight out.
You know, I've been working on it for a year and we've got twenty minutes of discussion to make a, a decision. It just doesn't seem like it's enough time. Okay, I'm going to open up public comment again. Yes, sir.
So I, I would propose the same, that you make that a local, no outlet access.
Okay.
Which one would reduce the amount of traffic? People are going in there and know about the curve, right? I live right here. I hear the accidents. I've seen them. I've come outside of my house and seen people flipped over on top of that guardrail. Got it. However, if you keep local access created a no outlet, cut it off here, right? There's no other reason for people to travel through there while creating the thoroughfare. But you have to have traffic control to the right, right? There has to be some type of traffic control there. There has to be some type of traffic control here, some type of light beyond what is currently there with those stop signs.
Okay.
Because, uh, you know, the lady had mentioned there are a lot of accidents there. I spent twenty years as police officer in the military. All right, so, um, you pointed out that there's an issue with Cox Lane. Nothing's been done about it. And it's been like that for how long? Right, so instead of just trying to, to circumvent a problem, how will we fix the underlying problems first?
Thank you. You know, I, I think that, I think that what's proposed is clearly an improvement from, from what we have. I just don't know if it's the best solution. And that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
I kind of agree with Trinity. I mean, inevitably, a lot of those streets are going to come through, or some of them.
Yeah.
You know?
Is there any way to get the thoroughfare plan up?
We'll take, we'll take a public comment.
Mission Casey Pointer, developer. Uh, so just to clarify, look what you were asking. You're saying abandon here and abandon here and keep that right there as a city street?
I think what he was saying was keep the east-west Cox.
Here, right? So we're proposing to turn in here.
Mm-hmm.
Allow Cox to remain intact on that point with a no outlet posted.
I think we can, if we don't abandon right here, we don't do anything, right? And maintain city street. We abandon the rest of it. This part right here needs to be abandoned. That's your, that's where your, uh, sorry, I'm not showing you. That's where your major elevation change is. That's where your ninety-degree turn is that we were talking about. And then also our duplication of a, of a road there, right? But if we left this here, which we're not opposed to, if we abandon it, we got to pick it up, right? That's not something we really are in love with doing, not for fifteen feet of property. So if we leave that there, have it connect right at the end of the green line and leave those neighborhoods alone, they keep their road in between, which basically you keep your corner alive. I, that's not what we're proposing today, but we're willing to go back and look at it, because obviously we want to work with everyone.
Extend the green line west.
No. Thank you.
Just the east-west Cox, Cox road.
You're saying this would be, this would be abandoned?
Yes.
Abandoned, yes.
Can we keep the east-west road? Does that...
Abandon.
Okay, so the only part you keep would be from here.
Which would keep a, uh, basically a city street in between the two developments.
Right.
But we abandon this so we get rid of, excuse me, that right there, so that we get rid of the ninety-degree.
But this also becomes, this also becomes a maintenance issue with no public benefit. So I mean, I, I'm with Casey. We'll work with people. No, I think it's a city road.
City road.
But it, it's going to be the sides of these houses. There's no public benefit, and it's now a maintenance that the city has to undertake. So I just need everyone to understand that. That if that's something you are looking to do, there are other things that go along with that. And I wish someone from public works or, or engineering were here to speak on this, but you know, just, just think about all your options and how that will affect us long-term as a city.
Hillary, I understand completely, and that's why I, I, I really don't feel comfortable making a ruling this morning. I, this is the first time that I've really, uh, gotten into the, the, the details of the discussion of this realignment.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's a big decision. It impacts a lot of people and, uh, you know, we, we've talked about the access, uh, the increase in traffic in this area with the Walmart being built. Um, we're, we're going to put a lot of cars on this, on these roads that are going in when these subdivisions are built out. I just want to be mindful of, of the realignments that we're considering and making sure that it's number one, the, the right long-term decision and, and number two, that those that are impacted, you know, were, understand what's coming.
Yes, sir.
So, um...
The question I have is what's the, the next steps? Let's say we approve this, uh, to go forward. So now the planning stages come. What are the next steps that would be required before, um, yeah, you know, we would actually abandon the road? Would we see a, a plat change? Would we see a comprehensive plan? What are the things that follow this?
Well, immediately following this would be, once you make a recommendation, it would go to council, city council, uh, on the actual abandonment. The next steps after that would be the developer would come in with this plan and, and possibly plans for this down here as well. Um, a- and those would be a preliminary plat and, and possibly final plats showing the whole road layout of this area. Another piece of that would likely be amending the thoroughfare plan, uh, because as Hillary said, this is currently a minor collector. Uh, this is a minor collector, this, and then somewhere here. Those might have to be amended, uh, as part of the thoroughfare plan. A- and as part of that whole preliminary plat process, we would work with the developer, uh, on how all these streets are laid out. But remember that, to a large extent, um, if it meets our subdivision ordinance, you must approve those plats. Uh, so there's, there is some wiggle room there, but not a whole lot.
So, so, so it's not like we're just going to do this real fast. There's going to be a whole lot more planning in between now and then.
No, and, and as we mentioned early on in the conditions, uh, none of this can be officially finally abandoned until all these other issues are worked out. And in fact, they can't close those streets until all of the new streets. However, they're ultimately decided, uh, until those are actually in place.
And ultimately, they'll, they'll have to come back in with the annexation, uh, and get that approved as well, to develop the lots and get water.
And, and I recognize that there's a lot of work left to be done after we make a decision here. But this is an important decision, and I'd like to make sure that we get it right. That's the way I feel. So I'm not prepared to make a vote on this today personally, but at this point, we've closed public comment. Uh, I'm going to take a motion.
I make a motion that we go forward as proposed, um, given the, all of the other, um, items that need to take place to protect the community and protect the integrity of everything we're doing. Uh, I think it's time we take a first step. This is a long time coming and, uh, I make a proposal that we, um, that we accept as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Can we get hands for the opposition?
It looks like Sam and I oppose and everyone else approves. So five-two to move forward. Next items, conditional uses. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. CU twenty-two nineteen, two thousand and fifteen, Beatty Circle. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district located at twenty fifteen Beatty Circle.
As you indicated, this is a request for, uh, conditional use for a short-term rental. This applicant, uh, submitted this request a number of months ago. Um, but in working with the applicant and looking at the ordinance, we realized that the application at that time did not really meet the ordinance. And talking with his city attorney, we understand that there are some past actions by Supreme Court that impacted, um, the way that we needed to look at short-term rentals. And so we've, uh, brought it forward for you to consider. Um, the zoning there is RS one. It is in District One, Tommy Brits District, and it is, uh, in the Nazworthy Neighborhood. This is the property on the left, um, that is in question, that wants to go to a short-term rental. Over on the right is the circle that Beatty Circle is named after, um, that's at the end of that property. If you can notice, the width of the road there is about thirteen to fifteen feet. It does widen out a bit, um, a- as it approaches the circle. But if you're going the other direction, the width of the road is about twelve, thirteen, fifteen feet, depending where you measure it. When we sent out the notices to the surrounding property owners, we received back, um, four in opposition. Um, all of those in opposition, uh, cited the fact that it, it is a, a small tiny road. It is a, a road of concern for them. Uh, the property owner that originally owned this piece of property, um, was a, a younger person, um, who used to have family over in, in larger groups, and it did present a problem in the area. But looking at it, um, now as we do as a short-term rental in a single-family neighborhood and, and really treating short-term rentals as single families, the way ours is written, um, that's why we moved ahead with this. I'd like to go through the impact statement on this if I could. Right now, there is no indication that this proposed use will create adverse impacts on the area. Because a short-term rental really does imply a, a, more than likely, a, a family renting it for a weekend, that kind of thing. Even though this is a narrow road with a gravel turnaround, this has seemed to function with the existing single-family homes, and we don't see that that will change dramatically, um, having this become a short-term rental. We believe that this is, um, consistent with the zoning ordinances. There are no short-term rentals active within five hundred feet of this proposed, um, location. We believe that this is compatible with the surrounding area. Uh, the uses are all residential. The intent on the short-term rental is to also be a, a residential rental. We believe there are no unforeseen adverse impacts on the environment. The area is already built out. It, the single-family home exists. Market need, we all know that everybody wants to rent a short-term rental on the lot. That's, that's a given. Uh, development patterns, this property is located in a small, tight-knit neighborhood with minimal parkings and turnaround areas. We have impressed upon the applicant that parking has to be provided on the lot for those people in the short-term rental. It cannot, there is no space to park anywhere else except on the lot. Those staffs recommending approval with, uh, three conditions, that they maintain all the off-street parking on the premises, that they obtain a certificate of occupancy from permits and inspections and the inspections that go with that, and that they obtain and comply with an annual fire inspection from the Fire Marshal's office. We have one note that the, uh, uh, property owner shall maintain the short-term rental operation in a manner consistent with our section four oh six of our zoning ordinance, including a required renewal in one year with subsequent renewals every two years after that. And that they comply with the proof of hotel tax. Uh, payment is not delinquent. Um, with that, I'll close the presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Sheri. We're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this, please come forward, state your name and single member district. Or address.
My name is Kevin Wilson, and my wife is Debbie Albert Wilson, and we live at two zero one three Beatty Circle, Beatty, and it's just next door. And I need to correct the young lady that was just up here speaking. This road does not work. It is a disaster. I've lived there fifteen years. My wife's lived there thirty. It is a single lane. You can't even walk past a car from the beginning of Beatty Road. About a hundred, a hundred feet, there's a right angle to the left. Is that correct, right angle? Anyway, take a left and that goes into our, our house, our driveway. And then you take another right angle to the house next door to us. The end of the road, yeah, it shows that it's wide down there, but it, something doesn't seem right, because as you get to the end of the road, you, uh, a, a fire engine could not turn around. Big vehicles cannot turn around. They stop at that first right angle. Like I said, utility vehicles, UPS, trash trucks to get in to do what they need to do, and they stop there and they block all the traffic. We have to wait sometimes fifteen, twenty minutes, depending on who it is, what it is. And my concern throughout the years is little kids riding their bike. Everybody's got to back out of their driveway in a single lane, including the one that's requesting this short-term rental. And, you know, it's blind. That's one thing. The other thing is you come head-on all the time, every day. And you cannot, there's a fence, there's bushes, property. It's that thin to where you can't get by walking or bikes, bikes, or definitely cars. So you have to pull off into the person's yard. Our neighbor right next on the other side, his, uh, plumbing has been destroyed several times where people drive off into his grass, and then the, the pipes break, and he has several times, the Stevens', Stevenson's. Anyway, my wife couldn't be here today because of prior commitment. She did want me to read, "Good morning, zoning commission. I wanted to express my concern for the zoning request two fifteen Beatty Circle. I'm the next-door neighbor there at two thirteen Beatty Circle and have lived there for over thirty years and want to make the committee aware that that's a single-lane road. The house requesting the zoning change is located two fifteen Beatty Circle and is located next to the end of the dead-end street." and is located next to the end of the dead-end street, half of a cul-de-sac. It's not even a full cul-de-sac area. Unfortunately, that area is very narrow, and even trash trucks have to back up. Can't even imagine who's large fire truck would do if it came into the end of Beatty Circle. Therefore, with limited parking at 215 Beatty Circle and limited space for emergency vehicles or even city service vehicles in the area, I do not recommend approval for the zoning variance nor approval for the short-term rental permit at 215 Beatty Circle. Sincerely, Debbie and Kevin Wilson." And just the other day, I got my boat trailer out, and I drove down to the end thinking, okay, maybe you can turn around here. And you know, there was no way. Luckily, the, the house on the end, that, that's, the owner is from California, and that's why they probably didn't get the notice. And to wanna deny the permit would be everybody's, except she didn't get the notice. But anyway, luckily, her gate was open at the end. I had to drive down her property, and it took me 20 minutes to just turn my boat trailer around. So, I mean, there's a big issue. You know, I'm gonna try to tell you that two wrongs don't make a right. They should have never allowed houses to be built here on a single lane, and they definitely don't need a hotel with extra traffic of maids, of all the other things come along with a short-term rental permit. Because once you live there long enough, a long-term rental, fine. Residents, fine. They learn to navigate in and out as you, as you come play chicken. And, and people who don't, aren't aware of where not to pull off and whose yard, it's, it's kind of a scary thing, especially if it's an emergency. And every second counts an emergency. So, if you have somebody that doesn't know and is confused, and there's an emergency, fire, or what have you, that's my biggest concern, and period. So, until the city builds a proper road, a safe road, I don't see any short-term hotel permit being issued there. That's my opinion and my wife's. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right.
Is that something the Fire Marshal's office would look at? Or would they just inspect the house?
Yeah, I might defer to staff to answer that. But yeah, we did run that by them. Sheri, could you, I'm sorry, could you come to the mic?
Thank you.
I did visit with the Fire Marshal's office extensively about this. They went out and looked at it. The new Fire Marshal and I talked about it. He said his problem is, yes, he can't get his truck down there. But it's a single-family neighborhood. If there's a fire, he'll find a way to get there. If there's an emergency, they'll find a way to get there. They may not, the homeowners may not like the end result because there may be some damage done, but they'll find a way to get there.
That would be for all of the residents that live there currently regardless?
Yes, all of the residents on there, and that's his concern, is there's single families down there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. What are the parking requirements for short-term rentals in the ordinance?
Two parking spots have to be provided on the lot, same as a single-family home.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sandy Butts. I live at 2014 Beatty Circle, which is just walk out my door, and there's that house. The roads are very narrow. The property's been in our family for 48 years. When we, my kids were raised out there. Our kids don't play inside. They don't have Xboxes. They play outside. And I've seen cars coming in and out of there, not the people that own the property. They're very nice people, nothing against them. But people who don't know that area, they will come speeding in there, up into there. They come out, they speed out. Everyone that's lived there has lived there for a long time. And we know that there's kids playing outside.
Right.
And there's a lot, like my grandkids are being raised there now. There's a basketball court at one of the houses where all the kids go play. There's, and the road really is not probably 12 feet wide.
It sounds dangerous.
It is very dangerous, and that's at the back of my property.
Right.
And we have felt like for 48 years that this has been a safe place. I think once we put a short-term rental in there, I feel like we're gonna get, with the kind of people there are now, you don't know who you can trust and who you can't, just like the FedEx driver. I just feel like it won't be a safe zone anymore where we can let our kids go out and play and not be in danger of being hit by a vehicle. And I think it's very important in this day and time that our kids do play outside and don't become couch potatoes. And that's one of my concerns, that we're gonna be putting our kids back in the house because it's not gonna be a safe area anymore. As far as long-term rentals, I don't have a problem with that. We have one out there right now. And when the people come, they're there for a long period of time. They understand, most of the people, we've had highway, Border Patrol people in there. We've had people who have come to San Angelo to work, and most of the times, they stay there at least six months. And we get to know those people. They're like our neighbors. And out of all the houses on that place, there is only three of us who live there 365 days a week, I mean, a year. And all three of us are opposed to having a short-term rental there. And I ask that you please consider to deny this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman.
Yes.
Actually, this, yeah, you have to speak. This is being broadcast.
It gets on record. Sorry, Kevin.
Kevin Wilson, 2013 Beatty Circle. Again, Richard Albert used to live there. His ex-wife, Debbie, my, my wife now. But the point is this, he's always said, and he's a road builder. He's always said that that is a dangerous road.
Yes.
It's not made properly. It, it, the traffic that it has now is not, not, you know, somebody says it's working. It, it's all you got, so you gotta make it work. But the point is this, on the books, there's supposed to be, the city planning is supposed to make it a two-lane highway for the last 40 years or something. So, until the city makes it safe and two-lane, I, I'm repeating myself, but this is my point. Until they do that, I'll vote yes for a short-term rental. After that, I'd like to get one. But we even went down after we spoke here several years ago, pro short-term rental because we stay in them all the time, we travel, and we're supportive of them. We know, know how they, if they're worked right and they're safe, great. But then when we went down to get the forms after it was approved, several years ago, we saw the restriction said so many feet, like 30, or at least two lanes, so many feet. And we thought, okay, we, there's no way we're gonna get approved.
Right.
And it's not fair to the neighborhood to have that turnover. And that's what she's talking about. A lot of people are afraid of new people. I'm from California, and I get it. They don't like change, but I don't mind change if it's for the best interest and it's safe.
Thank you. Good morning.
I'm Ginger Granath. I'm the owner of 2015 Beatty Circle with my husband Neil. And we wanted to take a minute to address our neighbors' concerns, and we have a handout for you guys. Okay, so, we understand that Beatty Circle is a narrow street, but we have lim, we have two parking, we have four parking spaces on our property. So, none of the people who stay at our property will be parking on the street. We have it in our house rules that there's four parking spots, and that any on-street parking, which our street is asphalt, it's not gravel. So, you can see where the street stops and starts, follow the asphalt. You know, anybody who parks on the asphalt runs the risk of being ticketed by the city. We do have no parking signs that we're planning on putting up, just so they know there's no parking on the street. But we do have plenty of parking on our property, as you can see in the photo. Also, a 30-foot-wide street, I think, is the, what the ordinance states. But it's important to know that in the residential ordinances for San Angelo, any home can be occupied by any number of persons. That's already in the ordinance. And according to Texas Property Code 92.010, leased homes can be occupied up to three adults per bedroom. So, the, whether it's a long-term rental or a short-term rental, the same number of people are gonna stay there, is my point. We're not gonna have increased occupancy with a short-term rental. And so, we have a limit of five persons in the house, which, which we get to set as the homeowner. But it's a two-bedroom house. We have five people maximum and four parking spaces on the property. So, there shouldn't, there will be less traffic with a short-term rental than there would be with a long-term rental. People aren't gonna be coming every day. And we plan on using the property ourselves most of the year. And so, the short-term rental is just to offset some of the expenses of owning it and because there is such a high demand for property on the lake. So, we just want to, the commission to understand that, as the staff has pointed out, the application that we've submitted is within the short-term rental laws in the state of Texas and San Angelo. And so, we are abiding within those laws. And that we also have plans to meet the conditions of approval, of course. We will main, maintain off-street parking on the premises with those four spots. We will obtain a certificate of occupancy from the Permits and Inspection Division. We will obtain and comply with an annual fire inspection from the Fire Marshal's office. And we will also maintain our short-term rental operation in a manner consistent with Section 406 of the zoning ordinance and all that that entails. And also, our short-term rental occupants, just like our long-term rental occupants, will not be pulling trailers. They will not be bringing boats down that road. The access for the lake is the public ramp on Beatty Circle, right when you first turn in. And those instructions are very clear in our short-term rental house rules that there are no trailers, no boats. There's no lake access on our road. So, all of the trailers, all the boats, we put in at the public ramp on Beatty. And then anything coming down our road will just be personal vehicles, which are already allowed. So, did y'all have any questions about that?
Do you have questions? Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. All right, does anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Yes.
Let me clarify just one thing that Sheri mentioned about recent case law.
So... Yeah, it's one of my questions.
Originally, the application was denied because of the, the street width. And the applicants did submit a appeal to that in which they cited several recent cases. One was a Federal Court of Appeals case that is binding on our region, and the other one was a Texas Court of Appeal case. And so, what those cases have said, and neither one of them were directly about, like, the paving width regulation, but they did address parking regulations. And what they're saying is if you're essentially banning an SDR, you have to have a compelling interest to do so, a compelling governmental interest. And a compelling interest is health, safety, welfare, all things that, you know, maybe having a narrow road, that seems like would be at issue here. The problem is that you have to show that it's unique to the SDR. And you have to do that based on evidence, data, things like that. And I'm not sure, I think when this was originally adopted in 2016, 2017, I mean, that was kind of a compromise that was enacted on this, but I'm not sure there was any studies done or anything like that showing that SDR specifically would create these problems with having the narrower roads. The other thing the courts are looking at is whether you, there's alternatives to addressing these issues that you're saying an SDR would create. A lot of the reasons given for not having SDRs is noises, noise ordinance, the, they'll become a party house, things like that. Well, noise ordinances address that.
Right.
In this case, we're worried about parking on these, this narrow road and whether they're gonna be obstructing that street. We have a street obstruction ordinance where an officer, if that was occurring, could issue citations for that. So...
I don't see how anyone could park on a 12-foot-wide road.
Right, yeah.
First place, but...
So, I mean, I would just caution, you know, if you're looking to deny it, I wouldn't do it on the basis of that, that standard. In the staff report, of course, there's the list of, you know, the impacts, development patterns. I think all those are valid bases to reject it or approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon.
I love and hate short-term rentals. I don't hate them. I just, they're actually better than long-term rentals because if there's a problem, you, you call it in, and they get, they can't do it anymore. So, I, they're, you said that you are the only three that actually live out there. Most of them are six months at a time to whatever rentals. I mean, you can't do anything about them, but the short-term, you can. You call it in, it's a problem, they reject the short-term, it's over. There's no, you don't have that option on the other properties. So, I, there's a whole lot of, you have a whole lot of power with a short-term rental versus the other properties, so...
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna open public comment and let you come up if you'd like.
Sandy Butts, 2014 Beatty Circle. As far as the short-term rentals, I disagree because long-term rentals, the people get in there, they stay there, we've not had any problems. Short-term rentals, you have no clue what kind of person is gonna be there, and...
And what I was meaning is a, a long-term rental, you call the police and complain, they can't kick them out for that. Short-term rental, you call and complain, they'll, they can kick them out, and they can, they reject their short-term rental, and they don't do it anymore. So, so there's, you have a lot more power with a short-term rental than you do a long-term. Is what the point I was getting at.
Well, my thing is just with the long-term rental, we really haven't had any problems.
Right.
But with short-term rentals, I would rather deal with one long-term rental person once every two or three years than several short-term rentals that you have to call in because you can't sleep at night.
You have that, you have that ability.
And, I know, but then we, it's just a continuous thing.
No, it ends.
No, when they leave until the next one comes.
No, but they won't, they, they're not allowed to use a short-term rental if you call it in and they have a complaint.
For them to renew their permit for the short-term rental, the city does due diligence to make sure that there haven't been any police reports or noise complaints. If there have, then they have the ability to reject the license going forward. So, there is a stipulation.
Okay.
What we, if we approved this, it would be a 12-month period. And that property owner would have to come back in here in 12 months and apply for a renewal of that short-term rental. At that time, we review police reports, code compliance, concerns, everything. If there are issues, repeat offenders, problems with parties. You know, I've, I've seen pictures of kegger parties out at Lake Nazworthy as we were discussing these short-term rentals in the past. If that occurs, then that's grounds for us to not renew the, the, the permit that allows them to have a short-term rental. Also, I will note that the Fire Marshal inspection of that home is not a requirement of a long-term rental. So, in many ways, I think that short-term rentals are safer and better for our community because of that. We've got folks that are going in. We have a certificate of occupancy from the Permits and Inspections Division. Does the Building Inspection Department make a, an inspection of the home as part of a condition of the short-term rental? Or is it just the Fire Marshal?
Say that again?
Does building inspections go through and inspect the units?
Yes, as part of the certificate of occupancy, they would.
So, they're doing a, the, the Building Inspection Department's doing a walkthrough. The Fire Marshal Office is doing a walkthrough to make sure that the, the structures are compliant. That's more than you'd get from any long, as a property owner, you can put your house on the market for a long-term rental and not have to meet... your house on the market for a long-term rental and not have to meet either one of those requirements. So, I, I understand your concern about the, the traffic, and it's legitimate. But, and I've said this in the past, I would, there are many circumstances where I would rather have a short-term rental next door to my house than, than a vacant house for certain, and a, and a long-term rental in many instances. So...
I just want to make you aware that you have that...
Just to clear that up, there, there are three people that actually live there.
Yes.
The other ones are, we have one that's rented out. The other ones, people use for their vacation homes, just for them and their families.
Yes.
And I do ask one thing. If you do approve, which I hope you don't, but if you do, can we get some type of a speed limit sign? There's no speed limit signs. There's no signs, watch for kids. There's nothing on that road.
And no parking?
Nothing.
Nope, no, no, no off-street parking, something?
Who's in charge of that, John?
People park up in our yard.
Right.
That's, that's nothing that you or us would have any authority to do, but we can pass that on to Public Works.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, last comment we're going to take before we make a decision. Yes, sir.
Kevin Wilson?
Yes, sir.
There's no dead end. There's no speed sign. There's no anything. It's like an alley.
Yes.
My point is this. The Fire Marshal, she said, will make it happen. They may not like it. That doesn't cut it with me.
Right.
You know, that's the main issue amongst all the others. That road's not safe for a fire truck to try to put out a fire at the end, or the short-term rental, or a house. So, anyway, that's my...
I think the point the Fire Marshal's making is that if there's a fire on that street, they're going to make access to get to that fire and mitigate the damage to surrounding property at a minimum. So, you would want that, I think. If you had a fire on that street, you would want them to drive through your yard to get to it.
That's one of my concerns, is that if there is a fire, there's telephone poles, there's big trees, there's, I mean, it is going to be a big issue. Why, why create more turnover and more traffic? It's going to happen without any signs first, with anything. Can't we do the signs first?
We are in charge of the signs, unfortunately.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, you're putting the cart before the horse. Like I said, the city's responsible to make that street safe. They've had it in plans for 40 years or so to make it a two-lane highway. Can't we improve upon everything before we start increasing the danger? That's what I'm saying.
I understand your concern. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone else wish to share thoughts or make a motion?
I mean, I completely understand the neighborhood's concern. I'm very, very familiar with that home. I've been in it multiple times over the years. It's been on and off the market. With that being said, their driveway is adequate for a considerable amount of vehicles, given the applicant stated that they wouldn't allow more than five adults. I also would look at what the rental amount per night would be on that, that unit. I'm assuming it would probably be at least $400 or so, just given the amount of lake frontage that property has. So, that also is going to rule out probably a considerable, considerable amount of, you know, potential SDR rent, renters that would not maybe be as desirable for the neighborhood. So, I, again, I understand the concern on the, the street width, but I am going to make a motion to approve the SDR, given the staff recommendations.
I second it. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. Okay. CU 22-26, 2542 Baylor Avenue. A request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district located at 2542 Baylor Avenue.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry, planner. This is another short-term rental, conditional use for a short-term rental. It is RS1 zoning. It is District 5, Karen Hesse Smith, the ASU College Hills neighborhood. Pictures of the front of the property, the existing home, and then down both streets, or same street, but looking different ways. 24 notices were mailed. We actually did get one in favor. I got this morning, and then zero opposed. The one in favor, is that one? And the impacts are, there's no changes to existing structures. They do have adequate parking. There are no STRs within 500 feet of the proposed location. It is RS1 zoning. There are no foreseen adverse effects on the environment. The SDR will address the need for more rentals in the ASU College Hills area, and it's a neighborhood, and the short-term rental and nature of the house does not impact the home. It's still single-family. So, staff is recommending approval with the three conditions: maintain all off-street parking, obtain a certificate of occupancy from the Permits and Inspections Department, and obtain and comply with an annual fire inspection. The same note, the, the property owner shall maintain the operation in a manner consistent with Section 406, and including a required renewal in one year, and then subsequent, subsequent renewals every two years, and proof that hotel tax has been paid is not delinquent. Any questions for staff?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name and address for single-member districts. I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Move to accept as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. CU 22-27, 222 West 15th Street. Request for conditional use to allow household living, single detached dwelling in the general commercial, heavy commercial zoning district being approximately .161 acres located at 222 West 15th Street.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Jeff Fisher, Chief Planner. Our next case today is for a new, actually a conditional use to allow a single-family home in a CGCH zoning district. This is District 4, Lucy Gonzalez, in the Reagan neighborhood. We mailed out 50 notices. Two were received in favor. We didn't get any further comments on those, and then zero opposed. One of the ones in support was from the owner, and then the one immediately next door. So, let me just go back to the map here to explain this better. So, Martin Luther King, for many, many years, the zoning in the zoning ordinance, and I would say this goes back more than several decades, was CGCH zoning on the east side of the street, about three lots in. However, and the long-term comprehensive plan also reflects that by being a commercial three lots in. Most of this area, though, three lots in, did not develop commercially. In particular, the, the two lots immediately east, so some of the corner lots, this one, for example, had a laundry facility. But usually, the second or third ones in don't. They have houses beside them. And so, what happened was, they had an existing home for many years, since at least the 50s, tore it down and wanted to rebuild it. It lost its legal non-conforming status, and they're starting over. So, I'll go through the rationale, but staff is in support of this, just based on this is essentially a one-for-one replacement, and also because you do have homes in this commercial zoning that were, were pre-existing in this, in this neighborhood. So, impacts minimized. Again, this was an original single-family dwelling that was on the property since at least 1954, when we first had historical aerials available, and they're just replacing it. It's consistent with the zoning ordinance, so that lot is at least a minimum of 50 by 100. So, that would meets the ordinance. When you have a residential home on a commercial property, it meets, it has to meet the standards, residential standards that are the closest fit. So, essentially, you just imagine it as an RS1 lot, and that's what they're doing. Compatible with the neighborhood. There's a home to the south and a home to the east. So, again, it's going to be adjacent to that. The laundry facility to the west, so there is commercial to the west, but it's been existing for, for many, many years, and has been compatible with, with the home. No effects on the natural environment. Again, community need for more infill, more, more housing in that, in that neighborhood. And then development patterns won't be changed. There will be a sidewalk required adjacent to the property, CGCH facing West 15th Street. They'll have to, with their site plan building permit, they'll need to show a site, a sidewalk construction plan, a drawing essentially of the sidewalk. And then, prior to final occupancy, they'll have to build it. That's under the new subdivision ordinance sidewalk requirements, or they can apply for a waiver. So, staff recommends approval, subject to two conditions. The owner shall obtain a building permit for the new single-family home and pave the two required parking spots. They have submitted that building permit. It's on hold, so pending y'all's approval today, the building permit can move forward. And number two, the applicant shall include the sidewalk construction plan and then build it prior to final occupancy. This concludes staff's presentation. Any questions or comments?
Want to have questions for the staff? Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Alma Montemara. I am the owner of the, what is now the lot. And, oh, my address is 5702 Melrose Avenue, Unit E25. And basically, we just knocked down the house. We plan on living there. My mom lives right next door. Easy peasy.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have questions? Thanks, guys. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion or thoughts from my colleagues up here.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. CU 22-28, 2025 East Houston Hard Expressway. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow a shop office and self-service storage units in the neighborhood commercial zoning district being approximately 1.861 acres located at 2025 East Houston Hard Expressway, San Angelo, Tom Green County, Texas.
We moved, yeah, I think, so, the owner has withdrawn prior to the meeting. So, this may come back bundled in a different application request, but as of now, this has been withdrawn.
All right. Item E's been withdrawn. Item F, CU 22-29, 35 and 9 West Avenue J. Request for conditional use to allow household living, single detached dwellings in a general commercial, heavy commercial zoning district, being approximately .516 acres located at 3 and 5 West Avenue J. And in the general commercial and two-family residential zoning districts being approximately 2, .227 acres located at 9 West Avenue J.
Thanks, Jer Stirling. Jeff Fisher, again. So, the next case, this is for Habitat for Humanity. They want to build three homes on these three lots at the corner of Chadburn, north of Avenue K and south of Avenue J. They have a building permit in for this one, which has dual zoning on it. It was RS2 and CGCH. And then eventually, they'll put two new single-family homes over here. So, just to expedite their permitting process and not have to wait longer, we're doing this as a conditional use for now, to allow all three lots to keep the current zoning and allow the homes to go forward. However, staff has talked to them, and we had requested that in order for us to support this, we wanted the rezoning and the comprehensive plan amendment to continue to go forward after this process. So, eventually, it would clean this up, and this would all be residential in the future instead of commercial. They've agreed to do that. They have submitted their zoning and their comp plan applications, and so those will probably be coming back to you at a future meeting. But this will at least get them through the process. It's in the Fort Contra neighborhood, Harry Thomas, District 3. So, we mailed out 12 notices. We didn't receive any back in favor or opposed. Staff is in support of this for several reasons. Again, this is a fairly already-developed area, so it's really acts as an infill. There's a church on this L-shaped piece here. So, again, institutional use next door. It's not heavy commercial or oil-filled equipment. It's just a, an institutional use. So, having the church next door to the house is our compatible neighbors. And then also, in terms of the long-term plan, this is already neighborhood here, so it just makes sense to have that whole block as, as yellow instead of, instead of pink. There's enough area here, we believe, for sufficient for other commercial development, but this is a better use of the land. The other reason we looked at doing all three is because if they only came forward with one right now, and for whatever reason, their funding was cut, or they didn't build the other two, we didn't want to have one of these lots that's still CGCH-sandwiched in between RS1. So, you wouldn't want to have a house in the middle, but then have heavy commercial and heavy commercial. So, clean it up, allow them to go forward with all three homes. Again, only the one to the left is going to be permitted right now, but there will be two more coming in in the future, we hope. So, staff recommends approval. Kind of already went all over this, so it meets the criteria in the zoning ordinance. All lots meet the minimum lot sizes, compatible with the surrounding area and the church. And again, we, we definitely believe there's a community need, not only here, but just overall in San Angelo, for, for more housing. And there's, there's plenty of commercial areas to develop, so this wouldn't be, we don't believe this would be taken away from that. Again, under the new ordinance, because it's commercially zoned, a sidewalk would be required adjacent to the property on Avenue J. However, if that zoning gets changed, that sidewalk will, will no longer be required along J. However, the, the subdivision plat that was approved did require one along Chadburn. So, there, at the very least, we will get a sidewalk on Chadburn, which I think is the more important street as the arterial. It'll have some of those homes, at least, they'll be able to walk to the corner if they need to get public transit, or just, you know, their kids are walking along. So, they'll have to do the one on Chadburn anyway. And that's it. We support the conditional use, subject to the same two conditions: obtain a building permit and then construct the sidewalk. Any questions?
Are all three of the homes going to be oriented to Avenue J?
I believe so. I believe we're representative with...
Can we make that a requirement of, or a condition of the approval?
I think so. I'm going to let Mr. Valderras speak, but I believe we can do that. Yes.
I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Adrian Valderras, I'm a board member for Habitat, and I'm in charge of their construction projects.
Yes, sir.
But yes, all, we plotted these lots, and they're all facing Avenue J.
Perfect.
So, they won't have any frontage coming in from Chadburn.
Good.
Time is of essence for us. We had some grants in place. People have been waiting for a little over two years. I just came on this year, but we'd really like to proceed and get this done, so we can do for these families. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Valderras. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion or comments.
Jeff, really quick, though, where it said, you mentioned you, you want to clean it up and make sure that those were all zoned residential. We're just talking about those three lots, right? Not any of the area surrounding. Correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented.
Do we want to add the third condition, or are we confident, based on Mr. Valderras, that the houses will orient towards Avenue?
I'm fine without adding it, just with Mr. Valderras's consent.
Yeah. I, yeah. Yes?
Yeah. Given the shape of the lot, it would be very difficult to build a house that faces that direction, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just two conditions.
Okay. Two conditions. So, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero.
Thank you.
CU 22-30, 1802 West Avenue I. Request for approval of conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district located at 1802 West Avenue I.
Hello. Ray Lineberry, Lineberry again. And I guess I'm closing the show. This is the last case, and it is a conditional use for a short-term rental. RS1 zoning, District 5, Karen Hesse Smith, in the Santa Rita neighborhood. It's the front of the house, and then, again, looking both ways down the street. There was 26 notices mailed, and we actually did receive one more, or one in favor, and one opposed the, the one in favor across the street, and zero opposed. one opposed the, the one in favor, across the street, and zero opposed. The applicant plans on making no changes to the existing structure on the lot and has, does not have adequate parking. That is a requirement.
Yep. I can ask you about that.
Consistent with the zoning ordinance, there are no STRs active within the 500 feet. The rental would be in the RS1, single-family zoning. There's no foreseen adverse effects on the environment. The SDR will address a need for more rentals in the Santa Rita area, and this neighborhood, this is a neighborhood, so short-term rental does not impact. There are three conditions. It says construct and maintain all off-street parking instead of just maintain. We have spoken to the owner, he's aware, he knows, they already have a.
There's an accessory structure in the back, it looks like.
Correct, and that's where they've been parking, it's a garage. They just need to pave it.
Okay.
Right now, I think it's Caliche. Yeah. So they just need to pave that. And he is aware, and he's willing to do it. And then obtain a certificate of occupancy from the permits and inspections, and obtain and comply with the annual fire inspection, and then maintain the SDR operation in a manner consistent with Section 406, and include the required renewal in one year, and the subsequent renewals every two years, and proof that the hotel tax is not delinquent. Any questions?
Is there a requirement for two off-street parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for the staff? Open up public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please come forward. I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion from my colleagues here.
Move to accept as presented.
We have a motion and a second to accept as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. Public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address comments to the dais, and begin by stating their name and address or single-member district. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. Going to open public comment. Anyone wish to speak in a general format? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Director's report.
Just one thing, just like to announce that this is, will be Jeff Fisher's last meeting. He is moving on to other things, and so we want to congratulate him, but also express our loss and thank him for his service for eight years with the city.
Sorry to see you go, Jeff.
Glad you did.
Are you staying in San Angelo, or?
I, it's, I'll be moving a little bit west.
Okay.
I want to thank all of you for your, your service. I've been the planning, it's been almost nine years, actually, and I've been the planning commission liaison, and you're just a terrific group to work with. And I will miss all of you greatly and, and the city of the citizens here. So best of luck to everybody, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Jeff. The feelings are mutual, and we will definitely miss you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Future meeting and agenda announcements, next regular meeting of the planning commission is scheduled to begin at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, the 23rd of January, at City Hall, East Mezzanine Room, 72 West College Avenue. Adjournment? Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. It is 11:35.